Also, lastly, on the, you made mention about the account technician position and, and I think that while, you know, definitely if we have a contractor that's moving on, obviously, we need to replace, replace anybody because it's an important position. But I think that the city manager should really reconsider whether or not it's prudent for us to be going with contract labor versus permanent hires because the permanent hires, first off, take a little longer if for some reason they're not working out and secondly, there is not only short-term add-on fringe benefits, but there's also longer-term obligations through the pension requirements and although now it's being minimized, there's still, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year on contributions to healthcare. And while the item was actually put into the budget, I did look up the budget that we put forward, you know, there was a number of items that I'll ask the city manager to really look over because we did say that, you know, the objectives really were to continue to look at exploring shared services and contract services, those are identified there, as well as it did say, the only place it talked about hiring permanent staff was in the positions of finance director, police chief, and public works. So those were the ones that were specifically called out. I realized that in the detail, although it wasn't identified upfront in the budget, but in the detail it said, oh, we want to change this to be a full-time position. It wasn't specifically called out and there are other locations and other employee areas where, such as in dispatch, for example, where it just says a head, it doesn't say whether it's contract or not. So a couple of years ago, we had somebody make a minor change in the head count of, for one of the employees that was only supposed to be working .75 and a leadership person changed that to 1.0 in the budget and didn't really get caught until after the fact and then it was there and it's never been reversed. So again, city manager, I'd like you to really take a hard look at the need for a full-time employee versus contract employee who recognize that this is not a voting opportunity for the council, but I wanted to express my concern and ask for your reconsideration in this area and possible further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council, Vice Mayor Carlson?
Yes, I'm-
Can I just add another thing?
Can we let Vice Mayor Carlson?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said-
Thank you. Okay.
Yes, I wanted to just comment on the school safety issue portion of the report. I was one of those that asked some questions about the plans for school safety. A thing that triggered my question was a communication that went out to the school parents of the Redwood City School District where the Redwood City Police Department is taking the lead in working with all the schools in that district in trying to put together a more enhanced, comprehensive preparedness plan. And one of the things I learned recently from the vice principal of Silby Lane School is that there's a, among other things, a new protocol for handling a situation where an intruder may go on school grounds and you have kids out in the play area in the back portion of Silby Lane School. The new protocol calls for those kids not to go to a classroom, but to scatter in the neighborhood. And so my question was, you know, this, here we have the Redwood City School District School in our, in our town here, we have another police department that has a new protocol and I'm curious as to what the coordination situation is between our department and Redwood City. It noted in the report that in 2009, there was a, a get-together on mitigation strategy with Redwood City School District, but there's, was nothing in the report that really responded to my question. So perhaps I could get, get a response either tonight or sometime soon on that.
We certainly can provide that to the entire council. I'll meet with the chief and we'll get some feedback for you.
The other, other thing that I mentioned to the city manager the other day is that we got a response back from the librarian, the county library, JPA, in response to some questions I asked about how costs are handled and deducted from the Atherton tax money that they receive. And the response was pretty, pretty, pretty slight. Over a million dollars a year is spent on behalf of Atherton. Forty-nine percent of those are direct costs in running a lot, running the library and 51% are indirect costs. The allocation formula is suspect because they include 16,000 residents in that, in that number, which is the attendance area that's been assigned to, to Atherton. And what I'm hoping that will happen is that that report would be included in the next city manager's report. And any further detail that you could provide, a way of transparency, if the funds were on our books, we'd have a lot more detail that we could be looking at. But perhaps you could ask some further questions of the county librarian to give us a little more insight as to the allocation process and the other question is, apparently, they are, they tell Atherton that Atherton, you can't spend any of those funds without their approval. But Atherton City Council, in their budget process, has only approved 4% to 16% for the total amount of money spent the last three years by the county assigned to the Atherton Library. So all the rest of that, all the rest of the money, been based upon decisions made solely by the JPA. And I think that that is something that we ought to raise a question about.
I just want to add to Councilmember Whitmer's comments. You know, I, being retired and I walk around town a lot trying to reduce the aging process and in doing so, I talk to a lot of residents, a lot of contractors, and I go into the park and talk to people there. Most of the people I talk to say they're getting much better service now from our contract employees than ever did from our full-time employees and that's, I have not had one contractor ever tell me anything different. And therefore, I would just add to Councilmembers Whitmer's comments that, to me, contract employees are people we can hire and fire. They don't do the job, you can fire them right away. We can't really do that with the full-time employees. So I would be very, very careful in adding full-time employees for jobs that can be handled by contract employees. I mean, we've had really good luck with our contract employees.
Thank you. Would you like to make a comment on the city manager's report?
Yeah, thank you. My comments are going to be focused a little bit more on the, there's a comment in here that mentions that you've received some complaints related to speeding vehicles, 35 miles per hour. Do we have any idea where? And the parking issue. I've received a few complaints related to construction site parking on both sides of the street and some of the streets are pretty narrow and to which residents have said they haven't been able to get through parking-wise. Can we expand that a little bit as far as maybe looking into construction sites and maybe trying to get a little better focus so that neighbors can get in and out through their residence parking on both sides of the street? Because that's also going to be another effect to our future plans related to bicycle safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to public comments. Does anyone have a comment on the city manager's report? If not, my questions or comments were that in regarding Councilmember Whitmer's, the recology rate setting, can we get a brief update from the ad hoc committee, Councilmember Whitmer and Vice Mayor Carlson, who are the ad hoc committee with the recology SBWMA, and what is the next steps that we're going to be taking in regards to our rate setting and will there be a public meeting scheduled to discuss them?
Well, Jerry and I are scheduled to meet, I think, sometime early next month, but we haven't confirmed a date, with Robert to look over the work that Kathleen did. You may recall when they came out with the rates, they pretty much said, well, every other jurisdiction is approving these things and we said we'd like to actually go through those. So we hired, on a contract basis, somebody who had actually worked up at recology in the early days and helping them establish their first rates. And so she was going through all those and she got stonewalled with, with getting information back. And then in the midst of starting to get the information back, she got a job down in San Diego and moved down there, but continued to work in the evenings to get the work back up to us. And then Robert came on board and then there was some handover between Robert. I guess Robert had the data back in late November, but we haven't had a chance to get, get it. So back in, I think, December, January timeframe, I'm not sure which, but I asked the city manager, when can we get this? And I think that it's, Robert and he had a get-together on some things and the last I saw was an email from Robert saying, we get that. At the last meeting, Jerry, I think, brought up, let's go ahead and take a look at also the green rates, maybe we need to do some shuffling there. So once we get the data and we look over the rates, then we'll look at the rate structure and, and at one time, we were going to, in December, actually make a presentation at this council, at a council meeting, a form, a normal council meeting to discuss these where we are. You know, the good news is the rate structure that recology has given us shows that we're right on track with where we are, but whether or not we believe it shouldn't be lower, we have to determine that and then we have to make sure that we're well positioned. But at this point in time, there's been no rate changes. But Jerry and I will look into that after we get the data.
Thank you very much. I know that we're in good hands with this ad hoc committee to work through this, so thank you very much. The only other comment on the city manager's report has to do with our team-building workshop and I just want to make sure that in coordinating that, that meeting, that every council member does their best to try to make room in their calendars to attend and also that city manager direct the facilitator to review our code of ethics. It has not been updated or reviewed, I think, since 2008 and there is a clause in it that does indicate that it, this code of conduct and our procedures should be discussed at least annually and we need to do that. So thank you very much. If there's no more other questions, I'd like to call for motion just to receive the city manager's report. Or we'll just receive it.
All right. I think we're received.
We've received it. Good. It's a great report. So moving on to item number seven, there's no community organizational roundtable and we'll go on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar consists of items number eight through 22 and typically, items on the consent calendar are routine in nature and they are generally considered in one motion and adopted by a single vote. However, if any member of the public or any member of the council wishes to pull a consent item for minor comments or further discussion, they're allowed to do that. So that being said, does any members of the council, do we want to approve the consent calendar as form, in its form, or do, does any member of the council want to pull a comment, an item for comment or discussion?
I'd like to pull 12.
Okay.
And 18.
Any other council member?
I'd like to make a comment on number 10. I'd like to make a comment on 17, actually, I'd like to pull 17 because I think that there's a presentation here and I'd like to understand that a little bit better. I have a question on 19. I have a question on 20. And I too would like to see 12, 13, I'd like to have pulled for discussion. 18 with Jim. And that's, that's it for me. I'll try some. I was gonna pull more.
Next time, would you just do it in numerical order, please?
Sorry. Sorry, gentlemen. You said the one you wanted to talk about.
Any other members of the council like to pull anything that's left on the consent calendar?
I think the only one Bill didn't pick was 15. I'll take 15.
Oh, come on. Really? Okay.
I had that on my list, but I dropped off. I spoke with Mike.
Oh, okay. Okay. Number 15. Okay. So I'll open it up to the public. Does any member of the public want to pull any of the consent items?
Other than 12, 13, 15, 17, 18, and 20.
And a comment on 10. Okay. So-
19 and 12. Are there any questions?
Those are questions, 19 and 20. Yeah. So let's, let's go ahead and ask, have Councilmember Whitmer make his comment on number 10 and ask his questions on number 19 and 20.
So, so the comment that I have on number 10, well, first off, there's two and Robert was very helpful. I asked him questions on the approval and I asked him in the future if he would go ahead and put a note as to what we're accruing for so that we all know and it's clear. He did make a comment here and I realize this is a trivial one, but probably one that shouldn't be unexpected, says, we're going to explore areas of increased expenditures if needed for any departments. I would hope that at the same time, we were also looking where there's going to be underspending that we could perhaps apply to the general fund. Okay? So we don't have to spend all the money and we made that clear and actually, we've made it clear when we approved the budget that on a quarterly basis, we would like to see the cost to complete, which we haven't seen, and we would like to, and maybe make adjustments because there might be some areas where we do underspend. So would we please make sure that we have the corollary to your overspend and the next time we see this? Thank you. That was my comment on number 10.
Well, received.
Okay. Thank you, Robert. Thank you for your time and your quick response the other day on my comments. I'm done with 10.
How about your questions on number 19 and number 20?
Okay. 19. First off, I've got, it's got my full support. My only question, it was, and it kind of was not, for me, it wasn't clear as to what's, what was the relevance of the, hey, let us know, we also want to support Broadway and South San Francisco statements? Is there, is there like some quid pro quo going on or what's going on with that?
Vice Mayor Carlson will answer that for you.
Yes, the three cities are in the same boat here, so to speak, or on the same rail situation. We all have the holdout status. South City is the one that had a near accident and it really precipitated the sense of urgency to move ahead and request this resolution be, be on our agenda. Burlingame has the same situation. We had a meeting of the three cities with Caltrain and in that strategy meeting, we decided that be more, more powerful, more leverage if the three cities each would pass such a resolution and then appear before the Transportation Authority and Caltrain and try to push us along and try to get a fire built so that these things actually happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Question on number 20?
On number 20, I think it's prudent and in the past, we've always had some funds available for, for assistance, like for example, we had Greg Roth, Jeff Rothman assisting with some of our other discussions. I guess my question is, why would we take the money and put it into the Police Department Disaster Emergency Fund?
That's actually a correction. That was left over from a PNA report at the former council meeting and a resident actually caught that and I responded to the email for that.
Okay.
It's a correction. It's actually going from the unappropriated general fund balance into the labor relations account. The resolutions are correct. It's just the fiscal impact section of the staff report.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. Didn't get the email.
Very good.
I had another one, but I've covered it with a typo and I handed it to-
Perfect. Perfect. Okay.
So Madam Mayor, may I move the acceptance of the agenda, the consent agenda except for items 12, 13, 15, 17, and 18?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So shall we, why don't we cover these items and we'll just hold them into the agenda and we'll take number 12 right now? So Councilmember Dobby, you pulled number 12. Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment and that, I have talked to Chief Flint about this and I am very, very, I think our chief is very well aware of all legal implications of destruction of records. I also think he's totally up to date and what needs to be done and I've talked to him plenty about it and so I'm very, very supportive of what he wants to do. That's one item. But my second item is that, you know, we, at least some time ago, I mean, recently, when the carriage house, we had paper there that's been there for at least 20 years, maybe 50 years, that I don't think anybody has ever looked at. And I think it's high time that we either decide it because it was something that are valued, or we let the rats eat it, or they might eat it, but certainly, I don't think it should be taking up space there when I'm sure that nobody's ever looked at it for at least all the time I've been in Atherton, which is nearly 20 years now. So that's my comment.
Is there any further council discussion on item number 12?
Well, I too had a conversation, we did not have a serial meeting, by the way, but I did have a conversation with the chief and I also expressed to the chief that, first off, we believe he's doing a, I believe he's doing an excellent job and things have really improved. In my mind, as a resident here, in the 16 years I've lived here, the police department has been running exceedingly well, better than it ever has since before I moved here. But I think that there's also a little bit of trust. Now, I understand that the laws say that you can destroy them. I understand that current laws say that perhaps there's, even if you don't destroy them, there may be labor relation grievance issues where you couldn't refer to them or use them in justification or whatever. But those laws, I don't think unless, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, Mr. Connors, but unless those laws are new since last year, we went through this same issue then. And there is a little bit of resident perception, maybe resident trust or distrust. There are some people that have had some bad times or felt that they, things didn't work a certain way and they have had some complaints. Several residents sent letters, I think, to all of us. I don't know if anybody's going to read them in, but there was one from Colleen that she specifically asked that somebody read it in, but I assume that you have a copy of it and put it in the record, which I, you know, I'm not going to read, but, but I do believe that, that, you know, we need to err on the conservative side and on the more caring side. I know that there's recently been letters to the editor and editorials and regarding record retention and police conduct and things like that in other communities. And whether or not it's condoned by the law or not, you know, that doesn't make it right from a perception standpoint. And so I think that the fellow council members should, should really consider that and say, are we going to do the right thing for the, for not only the employees, okay, and the people that are working hard here, but also to make sure that there is not any doubt in the residents' minds that, that we have their best interests at heart and that this is their town. And so, you know, I'd like to hear what the other council members say, but I do think it's something that people should, we should have some, some more dialogue on. Last time, the dialogue was, look, if somebody's left the organization, definitely, we should, why keep these trivial things? But if somebody was here, perhaps it was, it was reasonable that it would, it would stay. If they were still an employee, we should probably keep record. Maybe if it was trivial and dismissed, we don't need to necessarily keep it. And it's not to question the chief's judgment or Mr. Connor's judgment or the city manager's judgment. I'm sure everybody believes that these records can be destroyed and it's not going to be an issue and whatever occurred that caused the complaint or whatever, that it's over and done with and will not recur. But it's, it's just the view from the, from the community that perhaps we should really reconsider this and not, and not destroy them. They don't take up a lot of space. They could be scanned, they could be stored away. I understand from the chief, and he has a valid point, that there can always be unlawful release or loss of information that could fall into the wrong hands, get published in the paper, but you know what? We run that risk all the time. Social Security numbers could be released inadvertently when we're asking for employee lists and that type of information gets released all the time. It's against the law, but it happens. So people make mistakes, but, but, you know, if we, if we safeguard it properly, those things shouldn't happen and we shouldn't be doing it just for that reason alone. So I do, I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say. Thank you.
Any other council members like to make a comment on this item? Yes?
Yes, thank you. I, I hear what Bill's saying, Councilmember Whitmer's saying and I'm sure my phone has been ringing as well. And I wouldn't want the perception that we were destroying files that were of deep concern, but in the other side of it is, is I truly believe that we have, we're making changes. And I do believe that using the police chief's discretion on his ability to review these files and determine that they are appropriate to destroy, remove, is his professional judgment. And I am sure that if the chief of police felt that any one of these 18 files was of any concern or of any future concern to his department or this town, he would alert us to that fact. So in light of the fact that, I'm sure that this is a pretty common practice of destruction of files over periods of time, you know, myself personally, I was in this council chamber less than a year ago when all five council members supported the hiring of Chief Flint and now that I sit on this council, I also support his judgment in changing the way we do things because, one, we do have to do things better and I think that with him as the chief of police and him as our guide with the department, he can help us with that and also using his professional discretion and judgment related to these files, to me, answers the question that, you know, I would support the destruction of it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Carlson?
I'll make a couple of comments. I, I think that we've been remiss in following our, our records retention schedule for a long, long time. I, I think part of the discomfort might be that starting out with internal investigation records as being the top priority to destroy is, might raise, you know, some questions. Why, why start there when there are so many other records that need to be dealt with? And if we had that process going and this was one of those things that was coming along in the process, maybe there'd be less, less, less concern about it. So I just throw that out for, we do need to have a regular systematic system that we follow. And I'll ask one question. When, when reviewed by the city attorney and the police chief, how did it make a determination that the destruction of these files wouldn't later be regretted?
Well, Councilmember Carlson, let me respond to that and in the same time, kind of hit some of the things Bill raised. Let me use his words because they are absolutely correct. These items are in fact trivial at every, in every sense of that word. There's one important file that I reviewed personally and I read every word in every file that was sent to me by the chief, but I consider to be in any way potentially part of a future lawsuit. Now, remember last year, there was a lawsuit that shall not be discussed, pending or had just been essentially resolved. And in that lawsuit, there were some individual, personal records- And in that lawsuit, there were some individual personal records of police officers that were in fact arguably usable in that lawsuit. And because of that, they weren't brought to the city council, but because of the fear that some of those records might somehow get destroyed, I believe the council, in overabundance of caution, said, let's not destroy these records. Some of these records were before you last year. They are absolutely silly in the sense that only police officers ever run this gauntlet. Because back in 1974, the California Supreme Court said, hey, it might be relevant in every single criminal proceeding about whether police officers are honest or use excessive force and these kinds of things. So they had the legislature create a special report. Anybody can walk to the counter of the police department and file a citizen's complaint against any police officer at any time. And I will tell you, I'll let the chief tell you his own experience, but mine, over 35 years of doing this, is I've seen one or two that were valid, that really were where a police officer exceeded his or her authority and was way out of line. Somebody that lied repeatedly, somebody that used excessive force. They're rare. It's the exception, not the rule. What most of these reports are, is the police officer stopped me, I was going too fast, and he was rude when he talked to me. Or I don't think his demeanor was appropriate. I think he should have let me continue on to my house before he stopped me. These are the kind of things that make it into a police officer's file. Now, why is that important? Because every other employee that works for a public agency, and every one of you as an employee with your employer, has a constitutional right of privacy in your personnel file that police officers don't have with respect to these penal code section 232.5 reports that are filed totally willy-nilly. There's no punishment for a citizen that comes in and says, the guy touched me, the guy looked at me, the guy said something to me. And yet, that rides in their personnel file for five years. What's magic about five years? Well, the evidence code says, within five years, a criminal can ask to see, to have the judge look at, the personnel files of a police officer, determine if there's any kind of a history of lying, falsifying reports, of using excessive force. That's what these reports are supposed to be about. None of them that are being asked to allow destruction of deal with any of those issues. In fact, most of the reports were not sustained in any way. There were a couple of minor disciplinary kinds of things where the police department took action many years ago. But there's nothing that is fresh or usable in any personnel decision, because if there was, we would take it out and we would keep it. You know, for instance, even if somebody were insubordinate to a superior officer, that's a disciplineable offense. And we don't care if it was a citizen that reported it or not, or somebody else. Those are going to remain in the file until after they're gone. These are, we're only really talking about tonight are the so-called internal investigations or administrative investigations. That's what we're looking at. And they are in fact all trivial. And the way that they're looked at is the chief and his staff go through and look at those that are more than five years old. And some of these are eight and 10 years old. And they look at them and they look and decide, is there any that they need to pull out because of disciplinary reasons or pending litigation? Then and only then do they come to me. At that point in time, I read them all, and I look for anything that I could, even using my very fertile imagination, think could come back in the future and be usable for us or against us.
Are any of the ones that you're proposing, if you were the chief, could respond if it's appropriate? Would there have been a more current one that's sitting out there where maybe they were rude to somebody? And they currently have another one that's pending that's being rude, but you're expunging the one that's five years old?
Absolutely not. If that were the case, we would keep the one that was five years old, because there could be a pattern of rudeness that we would want to track as a disciplinary matter.
So every one of these things, over the last five years, or in some cases where they're longer than five years, there's no review? There's nothing else in their records similar to this that's pending? Or any other something that's, it doesn't have to be similar, because similar is in the eyes of the beholder, right? You know, well, it wasn't rudeness, but he did something else, or she did something else.
Most of these are so trivial that even if they did it every other week, I'm not sure we would really care.
But you haven't looked at all the ones that are currently in the files now, so could I have the chief confirm, please?
Yeah. As the city attorney mentioned, our staff goes through those things, and we look at it with an eye to, is this a reoccurring deficiency with the employee? Is it something we have to be concerned about? And one of the things that's nice about a smaller agency is, is most of the staff knows the employees that work for us at the lieutenant level and at my level. So when we look at those files, if we have some indication that there could be a reoccurring deficiency or a problem, obviously, we want to keep those because that goes to build the packet for whatever discipline may come out of that or recommendation. So these are minor in nature. Some of them were unfounded. Some of them were exonerated. Some of them were not sustained. But in all cases, they were minor, they were dealt with properly, and they weren't reoccurring deficiencies. And one of the comments council member Dobby made is that we've got this house filling up with records. Well, these are the kinds of records that there's really not a need to continue to maintain. The, if we had an organization that was functioning under a federal consent decree, and there was police brutality claims and issues like that, we might want to save every single one of them forever. But that's not the case here in Asitou. You have a well-run police department, you have good people doing good things every day. When there are problems...